Welcome to the regular meeting of the Wakefield City Council. Take a roll call with Larry.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Now.
Hi.
And Scott.
Here.
Notice that the next meeting was posted at Bank's first Wakefield Post Office in the City Hall. Meeting was also advertised in the latest issue of the Wakefield Republican. Hope meeting laws are posted, and we also have a number of these copies if anyone would like to take one. And it's good reading. First item of business is to approve the minutes from the February camp, the regular meeting on February 10, 2021. Any discussion? If not, we entertain a motion.
Second.
Ross.
Aye.
Now.
Aye.
Scott. Larry. And we need to do the same thing for the special meeting we held. We talked about drainage issues on the north end of Wakefield, and also we spent a lot of time talking with Craig, our engineer for the water filter plant. Any questions with those minutes?
I will refer to the minutes in the March 3rd, 2021 special meeting.
And Scott, second. Scott?
Aye.
Scott. Larry.
Aye.
Ross. Action on the February 2021 Treasurers Report. Any discussion? Have you got over the end?
Yes, I have, and every question I have is answered.
Everything has been okay.
I just seen a couple things here, Menards. Are we buying everything we can in town? For supplies? Or are we allowed a town?
For some, Larry.
Pardon?
For some items, yes.
Okay. Want to keep everything in town?
It's a good point. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the Treasurers Report for February 2021.
Scott.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Ross. And now.
Aye.
All right. Next agenda item is to visit with Kyle with AMGL with the audit results. Do you think he's with us? I mean, Kyle's with us? Kyle, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, very good.
We need to turn up the volume a little bit, then we won't be able to.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so Kyle here. Kyle over there with AMGL out of Grand Island. Going over the audit for your September 30, 2020 here. We'll go through a few things and hit on some benchmarking and some of the recommendations there. So I'm going to start with the bound copy, the audit report that hopefully everyone has. I'm going to start on page three. This is where the opinion paragraphs are in relation to the financial statements. As we talked, I believe in October, it wasn't that long ago. We weren't able to recreate capital asset schedules just due to timing and everything, in the best interest of getting you guys relevant information. Where our plan is to recreate the capital asset schedules over this summer. So with that being said, we are not giving an opinion due to essentially depreciation and capital assets on the enterprise funds. But everything else, we are given an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance. We just can't guarantee that there's no material misstatements in those capital assets and those other funds. So hopefully we'll get that recreated, and that'll help a little bit with some of the benchmarking things that we'll talk about here in a second. Also, on page four, just to note that Wakefield Healthcare Center is a component unit of the city. However, it is not included in this financial statements. We refer you to their own separate financial statements there in that regard. So there is nothing included here, just this recommend or this reference, I guess, noting that they had their audit report done. And that essentially to refer to them. It is out there on the state auditor's website if anyone needs it, and hopefully you guys get a copy or have a copy on hand if you need. From there then, we're going to jump to page five and into that section, or sorry, page six. And this is where the management discussion and analysis starts. A little bit more information, we're comparing two years of audits that we have here. And this is the MDNA, if you read one section of the financial statements, I recommend reading this part. This is kind of the synopsis snapshot of what happened to the city during the year. This is also the one spot in the financial statements where we have comparative year-over-year information. So you can see the differences of what happened during the year. Everything else is just a single year presentation. From there, we're going to jump to page 10. And at the bottom of page 10 is the sources of revenue for our governmental activities. And so our governmental activities are the general fund, the street fund, sales tax fund. You know, you have some hatchery funds, CDBG Civic Center, a bunch of other small funds, but mainly those three first ones that I talked about. And this kind of gives us that breakout of the revenue and everything that we have going on there. In those funds, you can see a huge amount of our revenue during the year came from capital grants and contributions. You guys had a couple of things that went on. You had the big NRD grant for the levy project that essentially paid for about half of it. And you also had the DTR projects going on, so we received a big influx of cash from the CDBG grants there on that side. So as kind of an outlining, we'll see that when we look at benchmarking, how big that normally is. Typically, your biggest sources of revenue are property tax, sales tax, and then that state allocation. You can see in, in general, in a normal year, probably grants are probably closer to a hundred thousand. Property tax, sales tax, and state allocation probably make up close to sixty, seventy, maybe even eighty percent of our revenues coming in. So we're not dependent on anyone's source, and the fact that we can get those larger grants helps out immensely, especially when it comes to capital projects there. So that's that there. From there, we're going to jump to page 12. We kind of hit on it a little bit at the very bottom. Major capital projects that happened during the year. The city share of the levy project was just short of eight hundred thousand dollars. Half of it was paid for with the grant from the NRD. And then the electric paid for the other half, and I'll hit on that here a second in our recommendation type stuff. The Mitchner Steve paving project, once again, a lot of this was paid for with DTR, South Main paving, and Sixth Street paving. So some huge paving projects that went on during the year in addition to the levy. If you flip into page 13, we have the ambulance of about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Some remaining civic center landscaping and patio that was done after year-end pickup. And then the Christianson well property, which was purchased for fifteen thousand dollars. So a lot of big projects going on during the year. And then I'm going to hop right down towards the bottom of page 13. At September 30th, 2020, you guys did have commitments for about just short of four hundred and ninety-five thousand for engineering on the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe you guys potentially, maybe the last special meeting, discussed bidding out on that project. And I believe that's going to be a multimillion dollar project. Obviously, we issued our financial statements prior to that meeting, so if something happened, there's no additional disclosures there because that happened after the issuance. But obviously, going to be some big dollars going on there. And then that bullet point right above it, property tax asking for the year ending September 30th, 2021. It increased forty thousand dollars or ten percent. This was not a levy increase. This was purely an increase in valuation. Valuation of the town went up about ten percent. So next year's property tax is only increased about forty thousand dollars, but we did not increase the levy. However, people's properties did go up in value. So from there, jumping to page 14, this is the first presentation of the government. It's called the Government Wider Statement and Net Positions. We have the governmental activities, the business-type activities, and then on the far right, we have the component unit, which is the CRA. Really, the CRA just collects the TIF projects, administers some small TIF grants, but nothing really else outside of that. The governmental activities, we just have cash basis. Effectively, these presentations, since we don't have capital assets on the governmental activities, are exactly the same as pages 16 through 19. So no really big change there. The only thing I'm going to point out is on page 15. It's a multi-page spread. It's a little bit of a unique format. It's called the net expense format. And I always like to point out the governmental activities as we hit on it just with your sources of revenue. You can see that big ugly one point six million dollar number. This effectively is the amount that the general operations of the city, so non-water sewer electric. This is what we need, other sources of revenue that aren't fee for services related. There are property tax or sales tax, state allocation. We need those dollars to support those. And so you can see as we go down below where those dollars come from going down. And you can see at the very bottom, our change in net position. We had a decrease of about five hundred and eight thousand dollars in the governmental activities during the year. We'll hit on that here in a second when we flip to the breakout of those funds. Enterprise funds or business-type activities had an increase of seven forty-five. So overall, the cities increased about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The component unit or CRA decreased about fifty-eight thousand. Combination of a micro TIF project grant that went out the door, and then the annual allocation of thirty thousand dollars going out. Then from there, flipping to page 16, and this gives those governmental funds, I mean, it breaks us out a little bit more. So we have the general fund, the street fund, sales tax. We have the grant fund there. It has zero cash, but it did account for the CDBG projects that happened during the year. And then other governmental funds, the largest in there is the civic center one. There's the perpetual care, some equipment sinking types of. Additional information on those is found on page 53. I'm not going to hit on those too much, but that information for those other funds can be found on page 53 and 54. The only thing else I'm going to hit here on page 16, you can see in the very far left column are unassigned fund balance. As we'll hit on in benchmarking, a pretty good hefty size of unassigned fund balance. You'll see that number of budgetary stabilization right above it of sixty-five thousand dollars. This is effectively the amount, your budget that you guys approved for fiscal year 2021, that you will be potentially spending down. Cash reserves in the general fund, assuming we spend one hundred percent of every dollar we budgeted for. As we all know, that's not likely that everything falls right in line and we spend one hundred percent of what we budgeted for. But if we were, that would be our expectation that we would spend out about sixty-five thousand dollars. From there, I'm going to flip to page 17. And the big things that we want to hit on here are at the bottom mainly is our net change in fund balance for the general, street and sales tax. You can see our general fund decreased about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars during the year. The majority of that was transfers to the street fund to assist with those capital projects that were going on. You can see the big transfer from the grant fund to the street fund also. So the combination of those two makes a big chunk of our transfers. And you can see there, obviously, those transfers to the street fund aren't going to be an every-year thing. We discussed last year, you know, you guys don't quite have the restricted funds authority to transfer what I'll call surplus fees from the general or from the utility funds or electric fund to the general fund. You guys had budgeted to do that this year, but technically it would have violated the state statute, so we did not do that. So with that being said, you know, I'll hit on it here in the comments and recommendations, but while we're here, you know, you can see that minus hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That effectively, this year for sure, and almost likely every year, is about what we need additional revenue in the general fund in order to have a balanced budget there. And that's just balancing the budget. That doesn't provide any additional dollars for capital improvements or whatever that may be. Assuming we implemented an internal franchise fee on our electric fund in order to plug that hundred and forty-five thousand dollar hole, we'd need about a four percent franchise fee. In all likelihood, based on prior history from what I've seen, typically you guys roughly need in that range of three hundred thousand dollars a year between general and street fund to help kind of shore up those budgets. Effectively, that would be about a ten percent franchise fee on the electric fund. Electric obviously has the cash flow to do that. And if, I think if you would compare around to other cities that do not have their own electric fund, what they're getting, collecting is a franchise fee from whether it's Northeast Public Power, Knox Public Power, MTPD, whatever pay fee. The typical range I've seen is usually between that eight and twelve percent. I've seen up to fifteen percent. So ten percent would not be out of line, but it's something to consider, and I think it's something that we need, strongly need to consider due to our limitations that we have in place with our restricted funds. And those really stem back to the sales tax. When we implemented the sales tax, we did not increase our restricted funds authority. And due to that not, that increase not happening, we kind of are bumping up against that calculation in the budget that we kind of talked about at budgeting. So it sounds strange, we're still transferring dollars from electric, but it's considered a franchise fee versus a transfer of surplus fees. It also gets that consistent source of revenue into the general fund that we need. And so it's a set percentage, and we're kind of dealing with the known. Doesn't mean that there's not things that will not arise that potentially we can't still transfer surplus fees across the general fund. There's nothing against that, but it kind of just shores up our revenue source in the general fund to support the activities that we want to continue down. So that's kind of the governmental funds. From there, we'll flip to page 18, where we're going to jump into the business-type activities. The only thing I'm going to point out on page 18, and we talked about it, you can see the sewer fund overall between cash and CDs has about negative forty thousand dollars cash. However, when we looked at current year cash flow, there wasn't a lot of property purchase or capitalized items that went into play, but we increased cash flow about thirty-eight thousand. So, you know, if we didn't have any capital improvements going on in the sewer fund going forward, we would correct that deficit in, you know, roughly another year. A year and a half, we'd be to the positive. However, my understanding is this new project's going to be a sewer project, so we got to keep that in mind. We really technically have no sewer cash as it stands right now. So there's likely going to be, need to be a pretty hefty rate increase in order to ensure that we cash flow for this sewer project, especially when it comes down to financing and everything there. So just something to keep in mind there. Page 19, increase, all the funds had increases in net position before transfers. You can see that sixty thousand dollar out in the electric fund. I talked, said that we didn't transfer surplus fees. We did have the ambulance initially. It was paid for out of electric. Obviously, the electric fund cannot purchase an ambulance, has nothing that it can really do in accordance with that. However, it had to be budgeted for appropriately. We could have transferred sixty thousand to general, and since it's capital outlay, it would offset in the restricted funds authority. So we went through that way. Same thing, you can see that big negative four hundred nine thousand dollar capital contribution. In talking with Zach and Jim, we took the approach of the levy is technically a governmental improvement. It mainly protects the city. However, the utilities do have an incentive to contribute to that project because it does protect, you know, the power lines and stuff like that in the event of a natural disaster. So we went that approach, but you know, keep in mind, electric, I understand, does generate the majority of the cash flow for the city. But electric should really only be paying for those electric items. And so if, you know, we need to be paying for ambulances and stuff like that, those should be coming out of the general fund. And all the more reason to kind of consider that internal franchise fee tax on yourselves to kind of support those capital purchases that potentially we've maybe been using the electric fund to fund some of those items in the past. And with that being said, page 20, you can see the cash flow at the bottom. Electric fund had an increase of about nine hundred thousand dollars in cash flow during the year, transferring sixty out. In the past, typically, we've been, we've transferred, say, three hundred thousand dollars of that franchise fee. We still have pretty positive cash flow in the electric fund to account for any new subdivisions, any new projects going on there. So nothing really to be concerned about there, but just something to consider in that regards. From there, we get to the footnotes, and I don't have too much to point out in the footnotes. I'm just going to hop to page 47, and that's going to segue into one of our other comments and recommendations. And this is about TIF projects. You have the three TIF projects going on. Michael Foods being the biggest. You guys are the beneficiary of that one. You guys collect one hundred percent of the TIF. You don't have to admit any of that, so it's a great benefit to the city. You can see roughly two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars there. With that being said, there's about ten years left on that TIF agreement from the original fifteen years. One of our comments and recommendations relates to the TIF ambulance schedules. We looked at them a little bit harder, and especially with Michael Foods. Based on the amount of TIF dollars that are coming in and based on the TIF bond, the initial bond, it was considered a zero percent interest. I believe it was three point two five million dollar bond. We're collecting a pretty good chunk of money, and we're actually collecting more than one fifteenth of that amount every year. With that being said, assuming that bond and everything is correct, the Michael Foods TIF bond would actually be paid off in year 12 or 13 roughly by our calculations. Which would mean there'd be about five hundred thousand dollars that potentially maybe the CRA or the city is expecting to collect from that TIF project that they may not be able to collect because the bond will have to be paid off. So something that we recommend to Zach and Jim, make sure we get those bond things, make sure there's not something we're missing. In regards to that Michael Foods TIF bond, because potentially that's a huge impact on future decisions, you know. Obviously, that's still potentially shut off eight, seven to eight, nine years away from now, but it's still a huge impact. Five hundred thousand dollars is a big number, especially if we're planning on or utilizing those dollars for any projects. So that's the big thing there. The only other thing that I'll point out is on page 55. Those are the general fund department breakdowns between police, fire, parks. So there's a little bit more detail there. Nothing really too big to point out there in that regard. We'll hit a little bit more on benchmarking. Outside of the couple comments that we had, the franchise fee was obviously one, the TIF projects, and then the restricted funds authority that we hit on a little bit. The only other two comments we had was just adopting a formal capitalization policy. So when we're talking accounting purposes, you know, our recommendation would be about twenty-five hundred dollars. We could easily go along with a higher amount. This would be the amount that we're putting on the depreciation schedule in order to track, you know, to help us determine when items may need replays, so on and so forth. We don't want to capture every little thing. We don't need to capture desks and chairs and so on, but we want to capture the major things in that. So twenty-five hundred's kind of been our recommendation there, just to have a formal policy. And then in addition, the sales tax right now is being paid one hundred percent by the electric fund. Obviously, we're collecting sales tax on the water and sewer rates too. We recommend they pay their share that they're collecting. They're actually getting the benefit in that amount. It's not a huge amount when we look at the total revenue that's coming in, but it's still, you know, significant. You know, it's almost ten thousand dollars in each of their cases. So those are kind of our recommendations. Controlled efficiencies, we just have the same segregation and duties control deficiency that we typically have in cities and villages your size. You know, small accounting staff there. Zach handles the majority of the aspects relating to the county. So you guys as council just need to be cognizant, have those checks and balances, ask questions when it comes up, you know, if there's anything you need to question in those regards. So, you know, I think your two, I think, was a lot less painless for Zach and them. They probably thought we didn't ask as many questions there. But I think we've made some strides, and hopefully we can get those capital assets rebuilt this summer to get you some better information. Any questions before I jump into benchmarking on the audit itself? Okay, so then Zach should have hopefully given you a two-page that's got a ton of numbers on it, says city of Wakefield at the top. So this is our benchmarking, and we are comparing you in this group to one thousand to three thousand population. And when we compare you, we're comparing you on a per capita basis. And I don't, does everyone have one? Is that yes or no? Sorry. No, I'll wait till you have it, because otherwise you're going to have a hard time following what I'm saying for numbers, because it's a lot of numbers. But just so, this is something that we do that's a little bit unique. No, I'm not aware of anyone else in the state that does this. But really what we're doing is kind of giving you a benchmark. And I was at a village the other night, and they asked me to give them a grade, and I said, well, let's do benchmarking first. And I guess trying to look at this as almost a report card, how you kind of stack up against other cities and villages across the state of Nebraska. So when we're comparing you, we're comparing you to one thousand to three thousand population, but we're also comparing you on a per capita basis. So it's per person. So when we look at it, we're kind of treating it almost as the same playing field. Obviously, it's not always going to be apples to apples, but it gets us to a kind of similar situation there in that regard. Does everyone have it now, by chance? Yeah, okay. So with that being said, we'll start with valuation. Overall, your guys' valuation is just slightly lower than the peer group, about six million dollars. However, when we look at that as a per capita basis, you guys are slightly higher, about seventeen hundred dollars more in valuation. And as I stated in our MDNA, your guys' valuation increased about ten percent. So, you know, we're going to jump to higher than the peer group going forward there. So we're going to be a pretty significant jump. So that kind of drives some of the numbers that we'll see coming down. Unrestricted net position, overall, you guys are in pretty good shape. Governmental activities is really strong. You guys don't have a lot of restricted cash, and your general fund has about eight to ten months worth of cash reserves on hand. The business-type activities is a little light, and this is mainly due to sewer really not having a ton of cash. It's, it's got negative cash, unrestricted cash, so therefore it kind of spews that number down there. So, but you can see, we've seen about an eight percent improvement year-over-year there. Top three sources of revenue. I said, you can see this in this benchmarking. Capital grants and contributions, five hundred and eighty-one dollars per capita. Peer group's right around one ninety. So you can see the last three years, you guys had significant grants and contributions come in. Obviously, that helps tremendously with capital outlay of when we can get those. Property taxes, just slightly lower than the peer group, about nine dollars per capita. With that, I'm going to jump to page two and item number eight. And this is our levy rates. So when we're comparing, you know, I'm saying you're nine dollars lower. However, the peer group averages about a fifty-six cent levy, forty-three percent general fund, thirteen percent debt service to generate that two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We have no debt service levy, but we have a fifty cent levy that's generating about that two hundred and eighty dollars, two ninety in there. They're a little bit different numbers just due to the methodologies that we look at. But when we look at that, that kind of helps understand we're generating more property tax per capita than those peer groups with a lower level. So that kind of helps explain that. State allocation, we're actually quite a bit lower. The majority of this is due to highway allocation. You guys have been about twenty dollars per capita lower. Nothing you can do about that. That's just based on highway lane miles. And then municipal equalization, you guys are lower than the peer group, and this is mainly due to your valuation. You guys, municipal equalization is a two-prong factor. It's based on valuation and your levy. Your levy's higher than the state average, so you qualify. However, you don't qualify for as much due to your valuation, effectively per capita being higher than those peer groups around you. So once again, you'd rather have the higher valuation so you guys can control that levy, because we never know what the state's going to decide on municipal equalization, kind of at their mercy there. Governmental expenses, you can see our breakout here in number four. Nothing really too strange. The big jump in admin, there were some of the downtown revitalization professional fees that ran through the general fund. So they're not capital outlay, so they kind of increased. They got offset by grants, but really it's not. That was spending more on the admin stuff. It was just professional fees relating to those projects. A pretty sizable jump in the police also, so you're slightly above the per capita there. That's mainly due to the fact that your contract with Dixon County increased pretty substantially in fiscal year 2020. Fire, right in line, park here quite a bit lower. Pool, obviously tremendously lower than the prior year when the pool's not open. Obviously, the expense Obviously, the expenses are going to be down. Um, the library, right in line with the prior year, as is the cemetery. So all of those are right in line with the peer group or a little bit lower. Um, you know, once again, this is just a guideline of where everyone else allocates their dollars. Doesn't mean you need to spend more dollars in a category or less. It's just how you guys decide to prioritize and kind of gives you a baseline of what other people are spending their dollars on. Uh, number five, geo debt, you have very little debt, um, especially very little geo debt. So you guys are in great shape there. Um, unassigned fund balance in the general fund. So our recommendation is forty percent, um, which is effectively about four to five months of cash reserve on hand. Uh, you guys are about eighty percent, so you guys are about, uh, that nine to ten months cash reserves on hand. You can see the big decrease from the prior year and actually the last two years. Once again, this is relates to the fact that we haven't transferred those dollars from electric. Um, obviously, if we were to not transfer a dollar from electric to general fund, um, in fiscal year twenty twenty and everything went exactly the same according to plan, uh, we will have effectively spent down our cash reserves um, and have, uh, about three hundred thousand cash reserves on hand in the general fund or a little bit less. So pretty much one to two months cash reserves on hand. So all the more reason to potentially look at those additional sources of revenue. Um, onto page two of benchmarking here, uh, street projects, cash reserves on hand. You can see nineteen, we were about fifteen months cash reserve. Now we're down to two point two months. This is purely based on the projects you had going on. You guys spent almost a million dollars on street projects during the year. Uh, it's very cyclic when we look at this. Um, it's just kind of a guideline. Typically, what we expect to see is we expect to see a buildup to run somewhere around twenty-four months cash reserve on hand and then a spend down somewhere to probably two or three months cash reserve on hand is pretty typical from what we see. Um, number eight, we already hit on. Number nine, we don't have capital assets for governmental activities. And once again, we're not giving an opinion on capital assets on business type activities, but assuming they hopefully are accurate. Um, you guys are in pretty good shape when we look at the replacement cost potential coming up there. Um, operating income, uh, all of them did swing positive during the years. That's good. Uh, electric's about thirty percent, water twenty-one, and then the other two right around ten percent. Um, you know, sewer potentially is a little bit low in comparison, uh, to what we, our recommendation would be. Um, and I think that's probably supported a little bit by where our cash position is six in sewer. You know, obviously we have negative cash. Uh, so we've probably been a little bit light in the rates there. Um, so it's just something to consider and that kind of comes into play here in number eleven. Uh, the sewer debt ratio looks a little bit out of whack due to that negative cash, um, in play. Um, water's in pretty good shape. It did pop up a little bit, but nothing to be concerned about. So then the very last one here is cash reserves, where we would recommend, where you should be. Um, general fund, roughly, we would recommend about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash reserves on hand. Um, right now, you guys are about nine hundred and fifty thousand. So you're in really good shape there, um, in that regard. However, keep in mind, if we don't have that transfer from general fund, based on some of those items, potentially we could spend down six hundred thousand dollars here pretty quickly. Um, and if that were to happen, uh, we would be just right in the line of where we should be. So we always like to have those cash reserves projects that come up. And then in the business type activities, uh, we have a little bit of restricted operating, the reserve recommendation would be right about one point four five million. Um, we have about two point one million cash reserves on hand. So overall, business type activities, electric, water, sewer, trash, we're in good shape. Obviously, sewer were a little light in cash-wise, but overall, we're in really good shape and we can see that big jump since we didn't transfer money from uh, electric to general, you can see those big changes between nineteen and twenty, between the two lines from what we had in cash reserves to what we have now. So, um, overall, uh, you guys are in great, uh, mental state, just, you know, what I'll call small tinkering methods, um, in order to ensure stabilization, uh, balancing of that general fund budget, uh, going forward. Um, and you know, ensuring that we have enough, uh, cash, low cash reserves in the sewer fund, especially with a potential large project, uh, in the pipeline. So. Any questions?
Any questions? Zach? We had a question on the, uh, information that you sent out, the letters. And it came to the city council, the mayor, and it was number four on page three. Or I mean, number three on page three.
We have the franchise fee?
Yeah, it has to do with the sales tax. When the sales tax was approved by the voters, the corresponding request to increase restricted funds authority by the anticipated sales tax that will be generated was not included in the ballot language. And we recommend that
And so effectively, this is what we talked a little bit about during the budget time, um, when we were going through that restricted funds calculation. When you got to approve the sales tax, um, and we see this quite often, you guys did not improve, increase your restricted funds authority. Sales tax by state statute definition is a restricted fund. Restricted funds can only be utilized to service debt, um, you know, capital projects, stuff like that. Those are the exclusions in our local agreements for, uh, you know, the county sheriff, uh, coverage. But we didn't increase in the sales tax realm. So when that happens, especially in the sales tax, uh, we have an influx and I believe in your case, let me just double check here so I get a correct number. Um, your guys' sales tax is about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Typically, those restricted funds authority caps are somewhere in that six to eight hundred thousand dollar number. While we dump another two hundred and forty thousand dollars into that calculation without increasing it, uh, typically what sometimes happens is you are unable to budget for it appropriately and therefore in order to comply with state statute and that restricted funds authority live calculation, you have to lower your property tax, which would be a disaster. Um, in our case, if we had to lower our property tax by two hundred and forty thousand dollars per se, if that happened, that would mean we got zero property tax roughly, or very little, I should say, um, for the year. Well, obviously, we don't want that. Um, the only way to increase that restricted funds authority is to have voter approval. Um, and unfortunately, we missed out on getting that on the ballot because you voted to extend that sales tax last time around. The only other way around that, um, is a town hall vote to increase your restricted funds authority. With that being said, the big reason we need that restricted funds authority is our surplus fee transfers or those transfers from electric also flow through that exact same calculations. It's treated just the same as property tax and sales tax. Well, if we transfer across, say, three hundred thousand from electric to general fund and we don't, and it's not for capital projects, but just for general fund operating costs, we're going to, we don't have the authority to do it. We did, uh, last year, I believe, we had like four hundred and ninety-six dollars unused restricted funds authority, um, based on our capital projects. So we don't have the authority to utilize those surplus fee dollars unless they're going for capital projects. But we need those surplus fees in order to balance our general fund budget. So that kind of, that number three leads into number four of that reason that we need to implement that franchise fee because the franchise fee doesn't flow through. It's a transfer from electric effectively to general, but it's not considered a surplus fee. So it jumps across or circumvents, however you want to say it, does not go through the restricted funds count and it's just an additional revenue source for the general fund. So that's the whole big reason for the franchise fee. And that's where we're up against when we're budgeting is that restricted funds count, uh, we don't have a ton of room uh, with that sales tax because the sales tax is generating, uh, more dollars than we would have expected. Um, you know, for instance, you guys had about a twenty-two thousand dollar increase in sales tax receipts year over year. It's been pretty consistent from what we've seen across the state. Uh, a combination of COVID effect, but also the fact that Amazon and all the online retailers are now taxing purchases has been a huge effect because that many people are shopping at home. Um, so if our restricted funds, AKA sales tax, continue to increase at twenty-two thousand dollars a year, we're gonna continue to have issues in that restricted funds realm. Um, and if we need the money from electric to get to general to balance the budget, we gotta look at other ways in order to get that there and that's where that internal franchise fee comes into play.
And so you're recommending that we have a town hall meeting and, and have a vote to change that?
Yeah, I, you, I think you, honestly, you probably need both of them. Um, you probably need a town hall meeting to increase your restricted funds authority, but you also probably still need the, the franchise fee because even if we increase our restricted funds authority, um, I was just gonna look here. I believe we had about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars of capital improvements budgeted for in the budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty-one, uh, through the restricted funds calculation. Uh, if we do not spend all those dollars, uh, it's gonna come back and, uh, have to go through the budget again next year as an additional surplus fee revenue. Um, so likely you probably do need that, uh, that town hall approval. You know, we had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we had, uh, budgeted for. In addition, uh, you guys paid off your pool bonds, so that bonded indebtedness, you're not gonna have anything budgeted there anymore because there is no debt that's getting paid with sales tax or property tax. So we're going to lose a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of exclusions on our surplus fees, uh, our, our restricted funds count next year, which this year we had, we ended up with eight thousand four hundred dollars of unused. If we look at, that effectively means we cannot transfer any money, probably from electric at all for sure and potentially may have to lower sales tax depending on what we have for capital projects. So.
We are, we do have a capital project that's designated for sales tax and that is the water filter plant, but that probably won't be, does that have to be online before you can do that or we have to just spend the money?
It's just, it's just what you budget for. Um, so it's what you budget for and so that's kind of where it's, I don't like to call it a game, but it kind of becomes a game a little bit. You might budget for it and it might not all happen, but then it might cycle back into the budget the next year. You pick it up as an increase, but then you pick it up as a decrease again at next to zero, um, as it goes through until you spend the dollars. So that, that will help, um, you know, but at the same time, you know, when we're looking at everything, we are bumping up against that restricted funds lid. Um, and if we need to transfer more dollars from electric, um, or have increases or need to raise property taxes, um, you know, our valuation needs to increase ten percent a year. Uh, we might have to lower our levy, um, versus anything. So, uh, it's a, it's a strange calculation. There's a lot of factors that go into it. Uh, but I think town hall and a franchise fee are the two best ways to mitigate that without, uh, having to go crazy and try spending a ton of money on capital projects.
And how long do we have to get those two things accomplished?
What's that?
How much time do we have before we have to have a town hall and we have the franchise fee? How long do we have to get these things done?
It's being cut out right at the very end.
When, when do we have to have it done? Like what month or what?
Uh, the franchise fee, obviously, the, the sooner the better. Um, obviously, if the franchise fee did not go into effect until say, October first of twenty twenty-one, uh, that's not a huge issue because right now we are budgeted and your guys' current budget, but transferred three hundred thousand roughly from electric over to the utility funds. Um, but, you know, that, that would mitigate a big chunk of it, um, if we implemented that and then potentially that would give us another year's worth of budgeting to understand and make sure that, hey, do we need to have that town hall meeting? Um, you know, I think we've, it's come to the conclusion, um, you know, in discussions with Zach and Jim, that three hundred thousand to three fifty a year is roughly what general funds needing to kind of fill that stopgap um, in the budget hole that we'll have there. And so that ten percent franchise fee will kind of fill that. And so that gets potentially three hundred thousand a year that would need to go through restricted funds off that calculation, which helps immensely. Um, you know, if we had no capital projects though and no bonded indebtedness, we'd still be bumping up against that lid, but not near as bad as if we needed to transfer three hundred thousand. So I think, uh, recommendation one would be the internal franchise fee, then recommendation number two would be see where we end up this budget year. Do we need a town hall meeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
I have to go. Thank you. Other questions? No? No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. You guys have a great night.
Next item is the third reading and final passage of ordinance one, twenty twenty-one to amend the sewer limits. An ordinance of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, amending the customer service charge for users of sewer services provided by the city of Wakefield repealing, repealing all ordinances in conflict thereof and providing an effective date, be ordained, um, by the mayor and council of Wakefield, Nebraska. I don't have to read all this, you take what you have. Okay, it raises it one dollar. Ten dollars a month or eleven dollars a month. And all my answers are voted on. Motion in the motion and final passage. So we have a motion in the second. And motion the second, Lauren. And the next item of business is to do the second reading in consideration of ordinance three, twenty twenty-one, the rezoned city of real estate. And this will be the second reading. We can't give you both of us, will we? An ordinance amending the future land use map of the city of, is this the right one?
Yes.
The city of Wakefield, Nebraska, to change certain real estate now designated as light industrial to commercial and to provide an effective date.
And that's all there's a map.
We have, we have
That's all you have to read.
We have to vote on it again?
This is the second reading.
Yeah, so it's just second reading. Okay. The next one is another second reading. Ordinance two, twenty twenty-one, to award future land use map. To amend the future land use map. Blake, I read the wrong one. Did I have to turn it around or you?
Well, yes, I did.
Okay, we passed the, the one before. Now this one is an ordinance amended the zoning map of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, to change certain real estate now zoned as one, as I one, light industrial district to C two, general commercial district and to provide an effective date. That's all we need. Thank you, Lee. Okay, item number eight, action on a request for addendum to purchase agreement for the Hatchery Building. And either Zach or Theresa, you want to explain this? Zach, Hatchery Board, you got it?
So, long story short, they, they got, the reivers got some repairs for the concrete work on the north side where the that semi-circle was and it's hollow under there. I think it used to be a chute of some sort. So they got some bits to fill that, block that wall in the basement, repave that and then repair the concrete on the east side where Rhonda walks in, the back door of the nearly new. Um, those estimates were about twenty-eight hundred each. I think they got two or three. They for sure got two. Um, so they proposed to Hatchery Board to pay half of that, of which they were willing to do. That was unanimous. Uh, but then Theresa, I believe, got to thinking, um, might just be cleaner to just pay that, our portion of that off the, the final price rather than us paying for half or reimbursing them once we've closed on it and the building is then theirs and it's out of our possession. So the addendum is to reduce the So the addendum is to reduce the purchase price by fifteen hundred dollars, correct?
It's basically, it's not exactly that. I mean, still, the purchase price is still a hundred thousand. The addendum just says, we'll take our share of the cost of repairing the sidewalk. We'll just deduct that from the purchase price in terms of giving them a credit for the purchase price for that amount instead of paying it out of our Hatchery Funds, you know, after the sale. So that, that's the proposal. So then the city Hatchery Board will be done with the building. They can go ahead at their leisure and fix their sidewalk and will have made the contribution they asked and the Hatchery Board. Also changes the, this addendum also is meant to change the closing date to, you know, it couldn't happen tomorrow, but we had a closing date of March one. They had, they, they got a report back on the, on the building inspection and showed some asbestos and mold issues. They were going to ask the city to help, you know, apply to the state for funding, which we come, the state would pay for asbestos and mold in basement in city-owned properties up to twenty thousand dollars. And then after that, the Reivers were going to take care of the rest of the cost. But they brought it closed, then deal with that issue now. They'll deal with asbestos on their own later. So they're ready to go. And that's why we didn't close the first of the month because they were kind of checking into that asbestos issue. But since they're going to handle it themselves, we're ready to go as soon as we get the closing statements done. I think their bank loan is ready to go, title insurance is ready to go. We're ready to go. If you think, if, if this is then as a.
So fifteen hundred dollars, everything will be cleared up. They're not going to ask us anything for asbestos. We'll sell the building as is.
That's right.
As is.
As is.
No questions whatsoever, nothing else coming up?
They, you know, the, the purchase agreement says as is anyway, I believe, if I recollect correctly. They had a reservation in there. They wanted a building inspection. And, and that was done. And the only thing that they asked for after that was done was a better repair, which was just patching the hole and, and, you know, half the cost of doing the sidewalk work, the cement work, and filling that coal sheet or whatever it is there on the one side of the building. So they didn't ask for anything else other than that. So the rest of the purchase agreement applies. They want to go ahead and hit the building as is, just asking for a contribution toward the sidewalk repair and, and handle that.
So you'll prepare that final purchase agreement and then.
Yeah, that's what, that's what's, that's the then that we're talking about right now. That's been prepared. The Reivers have signed it. And you guys would just make, will make a motion, someone will make a motion and, and vote on approving that addendum. Then we're done with that and we can move to our proposal. That, that, that's an amendment to the purchase.
Which will be in the next week, right? That can be.
Probably tomorrow.
Yeah, possibly close tomorrow. If the, if the mayor has a chance to sign it. And.
So let me hear Ross sign the purchase agreement.
I did sign the purchase agreement.
Yes.
It's been like a month or two ago.
Just as an amendment to the purchase.
Didn't I?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought we were done with, with the whole thing at that time. Okay, what do you think? Need a motion or a second discussion?
I'll make a motion to further request the addendum for this agreement.
Second.
Motion in the second. Okay, Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott? Larry? Next item of business is, passage of resolution six, twenty-twenty-one, to approve purchase of vacant property.
And that is misstayed on the agenda. First, we just have to have a motion. There's no resolution at this point. You have to have a motion. If, if you want to proceed with this, we just need the okay from the council to do that and set a date for a public hearing. We have, you have to have a hearing before you can purchase, for the city to purchase the property.
What do you want us to make a motion for?
Just for us, given there's the okay to proceed with the purchase agreement. We've got a purchase agreement prepared for Ruth Shopky. Oh well, it's, it's for us, for the city to purchase for twenty thousand dollars on Ruth Shopky's property. So if you want us to proceed, if you're interested in doing that, we just need a motion to allow us to proceed with that. If you don't want to do it.
If, you know, we've needed property for, I think, uh, how is it, three sixty? So I guess my question is why, why don't we just, why don't, why doesn't, why don't the people that want to build houses just purchase it? I mean, why would, you want to go through the city and then have to, wouldn't we have to, we'd have a lease, right? Or what would we have?
We could sell it.
We'd own it. But what would be the advantage of us owning it and then turning it over? I guess I don't understand why we want more government instead of less government involved in the whole thing. I mean, why you couldn't do it as a.
I guess my, my thing is, as a council, it looks like there's been a lot of work done on this already. And we're finding out about it now, proceeding with this direction. The question I have is, has it been other properties purchased like the one over here by Mike Benson's? So we, that was house property. We were not involved in that, were we? Don't.
That was a CRA, so that was a different, and I don't believe this house is in the light of some standard.
If not, that way, that's why the sales tax is involved in this.
So, so has this request come from the sales tax committee? Leslie, did you guys, I don't know who the chair is.
We got an email on property. We got an email on some property. And I think we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars this year for purchasing dilapidated property to demolish or develop.
So, Ryan, email when you guys have a minute.
We only meet quarterly. See, we only meet, I think we meet maybe in April again. We're only quarterly, which maybe we should meet more often. Sometimes there's nothing to discuss and other times something pops up. And I think this just popped up as far as I know.
So, so was your committee then informed that, that Ruth had offered this property?
Well, we, we don't know who, just that there's property. And I think about the location. And then twenty, I think pipes have broken in the basement maybe during the last breeze. And obviously, it's probably not usable.
Do you have committees all on board to?
I don't know if everybody's emailed that. If I emailed, I know. I don't know if everybody's emailed that.
Well, I know as a member of CRA, if we did something by email and not everybody was involved, somebody would tell us it's not right until everybody's been part of the process. So that, that makes me a little nervous. Is there, is Ruth really interested in dumping it right now? Or is she okay with a month dealing?
She would like to have it checked tomorrow. But we, you know, we.
We, yeah, we all, I don't.
The, the, one of the issues is there was damage enough that insurance wants to settle it. And it's either pay her out or pay for repairs. She doesn't want to do that. She wants to get out of that property entirely. That's why just all of a sudden it popped up. She called us. We said, we'll see what we can do to help you out with that.
Who came up with the price?
I made the offer. And I made it, I made it absolutely clear that I was not authorizing anything. It was not a commitment. I said, I explained to her what we could do to fire the apartment, probably burn it. We could clean it up and sell it for a new house. We couldn't invest a lot of money in it, so. It was an offer and that's still, she understands that that offer is not committed to the council as the commitment to it.
Is, is that a big enough lot, the three sixty house?
It's a nice size.
A lot now.
Seventy-five by hundred.
Okay.
It's a nice sized lot.
I mean, that's actually probably bigger than the Rua's house that we built with workforce housing money. So.
Yes, yeah. That's why I asked her.
How big is that lot you're saying?
Seventy-five by.
Seventy-five by hundred.
If, if we would buy that, then we would, what, how would we turn that lot into a house? We can't do it. The city can't do it.
What?
But we would have, we've done it before, but we put a lot of money in the lot.
And sales tax, do it themselves?
That's what they're asking is for, to use sales tax money to buy this house, demo it, and give it, just like CRA did.
So it'd be contingent on, on that committee meeting and approving and action going forward?
If you guys want to, but they already did a poll.
I don't know who's all responded. All I know is I.
Poll being up?
Well, they did, they did, they did an email poll. A couple of people responded, yes, they thought we should go forward. I, I, you know, it's been our practice to run these projects by the citizen advisory committee, the sales tax committee. Not sure it's absolutely legally necessary, but it has been the practice of the city to do that.
You know, that's, one of the, I think it's important for people to serve on these committees, we have to respect their time and, and decisions. I mean, if the sales tax comes to us and says, this is what we really think should happen, then that makes a big difference to me. I, I don't want the sales tax committee to feel like we're telling you what to do, you know?
Well, but my understanding was it was just whether to even be pursued.
Couldn't, couldn't you kind of do it in a backwards fashion and say, you know, the purchase would be approved, say, if we approved it, it would be approved pending, you know, approval.
Contingent of money. Before you agree that that could be a good use of our funds.
Or you could do that.
Yeah.
I don't like any of those contingency plans. I think the sales tax committee needs to meet, since they're asking their money be spent. They look at it to see if that property's worth twenty thousand. I really question if that house is shot and no good, and we're giving somebody twenty thousand dollars, can we recoup twenty thousand? No. You know, we got to be responsible for these tax dollars, you know? Sure, it's money going into a good lot again, but I want to see a picture of a house that we can put on there because I really question that lot size.
It's a lot and a half.
It's, it's a big enough lot.
Is it?
But, but, I would, if you think about trying to do the best job with the dollars that are available, I don't know that, you know, we've done it, we've set a precedent. We've done it before with the two houses, or two have turned out pretty good. But we don't, you know, you're going to get the money back over years for property taxes. But at the same time, you know, we've got an electric situation to deal with at this time. I, I mean, but I think, I know we need housing. That's why I thought, can just a private person that wants to build a house, buy the lot and clean up the lot? And that would make it a very expensive lot. That would, what was the last one? We put thirty-five, forty thousand dollars into it?
Well, that's what we're trying to prevent is, is putting burden on the homeowner from doing that. That takes a, by the time you get a lot and demo, you probably are twenty-five thousand or higher. So we've done this five times successfully. Buying houses, burning them, demoing up. The Browns have two duplexes. Steve Breeze has the house. One Megan mentioned, the townhouse on Eighth Street. Those are all sales tax properties bought, demoed, and sold.
And we normally put twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars into the lot.
In my opinion.
And then we usually get five hundred dollars back with the exception of Steve, I think that was the minimum, was it, we had an auction. We can't, we have, we can't sell it without having it available to everybody. And with Steve's and Cheryl's, we had another bidder. So his was quite a bit higher, but not, not anywhere near what the cost of the city has. So we're looking at trying to get a new home built, but it's going to cost the city, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to do that.
So would sales taxes invite it into capital improvements?
Economic development.
I would think, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I think, I don't know if it fits the guidelines. I think it does. I think it'd be okay, but I'm not sure.
I guess my question was, you said you had two hundred thousand dollars for your budget. Which side is that coming?
Economic development.
Okay, so it's not utility side?
No.
I guess I would have a problem moving forward with it. To move forward with it, we'd be first to have the sales tax committee meet on it as a meeting as a group and get their opinion. And then they come back to us with the recommendation that we purchase it.
Do you think to make it a little bit more palatable, you could set a price that you're going to sell it for a certain, you know, listed at a certain price, like would be more than five hundred dollars? I'm asking, I guess I'm asking Brady, do you think that, uh, uh, if they're going to put a, if they wanted to put a, you're, we've been looking for a long time for a place to build at least one of the project three sixty homes. And you've got some people right now that are interested, right? Do you think that that would be something that they could handle if we put a five thousand dollar price on it? Okay, I'm just asking for information. I'm not.
I mean, I don't know what their financials are.
Yeah, I'm not holding you to it. I understand.
There's something they could probably afford more. There's something they could do less. It just depends on what their financial situation is.
Well, I think we want to have families.
Five thousand dollars for a lot, I mean, that's obviously reasonable.
So that, that would make it a little bit easier. I mean, you really, and then that would get a start on getting the money back.
I don't think there's anything wrong with setting the minimum of five thousand dollars for a core lot.
Okay, if I hear Larry and Val, you're saying that what you're concerned about is that the, we, it's no fault of the sales tax. I mean, they don't meet monthly. They meet four times a year. But they haven't gotten together officially and voted on it. I don't believe they can do it by email. I think they have to at least include them in a discussion. But they could possibly hold an emergency meeting. I don't know.
The, the next meeting is the Monday before your next city council.
April thirteenth is the scheduled meeting.
So if that's been enough for you to know, that's when the next meeting is.
Well, then I guess the question, are you going to wait a month?
I don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly be a bit confident that council would approve that. I think we could take that back to Ruth.
You can, for me, if LBA or CAC would approve it and make that recognition and say, you're the ones choosing how the money is spent, you know, not, not your second yes. But it just feels like we need to, to use the committees that we have set up for the reasons they're set up.
Do you have to have a majority vote for everybody at the meeting? Because I've been on this committee a long time and we've never had everybody at the meeting.
No, you don't need everybody. You just need your quorum and, and it's going well.
That's how it is for CRA.
It's all make sure because, I mean, you know, it's all budgeted. And you guys approved our budget, right?
Yes, we approved. We've got, we've got funds and two appendix, hoping that we can purchase some ground.
I mean, I guess I'll stand up and say, I, I don't have a big problem approving this contingent. Basically just giving our blessing as a council. And if they decide to move forward, great. And if we move all our court anyway. And if they decide not to, that's fine as well. I don't have a big problem with voting on that tonight, but it's up to the rest of you guys too.
Is that a possibility, guys? Any more discussion?
To me, that makes sense because then you're not stopping everything. It's going to keep the ball rolling a little bit.
Val?
I. I mean, obviously there's a lot of amazing plans.
I want the sales tax committee and have their discussion to see if that's a fair price for that property. Because Jim just offered twenty thousand. Is twenty thousand good? Or is eighteen, if they go down eighteen, I think that's something the sales tax committee investigates.
I guess what I, yeah, it would be based on the current price. If they decide to make an adjustment, they'd have to come back to us to prove if they decide to alter the plan.
So Larry, you're saying, I mean, I think that, what I hear, that no one's against it adamantly. And a lot of people think it might be a good plan and just say that if you guys meet, that, you know, I think that. So Larry, you're saying, I mean, I think that, what I hear, that no one, against it adamantly, and a lot of people think it might be a good plan, and just say that if you guys meet, that, you know, I think that there's, at least there's a, there are some affirmations here that that might be a, a plan. And I, then, then we want to vote. And, uh-
Current, current valuation predicted going is forty-nine thousand.
For that house?
Yes.
That, that, that house, when it's in good shape? That house right now is shot.
That's, that's the valuation, Larry.
I know the valuation for the house is good.
I know, I know, I, I have some reservation of these things as well, you're, you're paying twenty thousand dollars for something, you're probably planning on leveling. Um, but sometimes you have to ask yourself, what happens if you don't invest in that property, too? Um, does someone else get their hands on it, and it continues to deteriorate, or do we just sit there? And obviously, continue to deteriorate, and we know we have an issue. Um, this is a chance to, you know, I, I don't like setting the precedent, and we bail everybody out every time something goes wrong with the property, but, um, we have this money budgeted for a reason. And we have seen some positive results in the past with these kind of flips on some of these lots, so, um, it doesn't seem like that, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the plan, if it goes through the sales tax committee, they have, everybody gets broadly undiscussed on it. I don't have a problem, the problem I just have is go ahead without the sales tax recommendation.
Okay, so if, if the sales tax meets what, on what day of April?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yeah, just the day before council next month.
So I think that you can, you can hear what, I mean, I don't think we have to vote on, I think everybody's thinking that it would work out fine.
But I think you should vote on those, in, in order to, uh, complete the sale or approve of the sale, you have to have a public hearing. So if they're gonna meet on the thirteenth or whatever, and, and our meeting is the fourteenth, we can have a motion to set the matter for public hearing on the fourteenth. That's not approving the sale or anything, it's just setting it-
That's contingent upon the sales tax committee thinking that that's a good plan.
Yeah, if they don't think it is, you won't even, there'll be nothing to do with a public hearing.
When, when the hearing gonna be?
The same night as the meeting, public council meeting, next month.
So the way it's amended, right?
Right.
We would, we would know the recommendation coming off the sales tax before the public hearing.
Yes.
I would assume you would, yeah.
I move that we have a public hearing then to approve or discuss-
Just set the matter for public hearing.
Discuss the, uh, property yet second commissioner, or if I retire.
For public hearing?
Yeah.
Five thirty or something like that.
And, and the date is when?
April fourteen. April fourteen, maybe.
I think it's your vote, Val.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry? Aye.
Aye.
Rob? Thank you. Okay, we, we've got, do we, we can't put these two street closures together?
No, they're two different things, I don't-
Okay, and I think Megan could speak on this?
Yeah, I, I thought Adam was gonna be here, but he's obviously not, so I'll go out then and, and talk about it. Um, you should've gotten a map-
Yes.
For the Wake Fest.
Yeah.
Pretty much, it's going to be very similar to, to what we had planned for the previous year, um, that we, when we didn't get to have balloons and barbecue. Um, Wake Fest is gonna be a little different to the balloons, um, we just haven't had a good turnout, so now we're gonna try some light music, bring in some bands, and, um, you know, have that throughout, some light entertainment throughout the day. So the map you guys have really is-
It's good.
Well, it, it's not set in stone, you know, some things may have to change, if we have more vendors, or we have more cars, we'll have to bring them down Main Street or something, but, um, yeah, so that's, that's what we're looking, looking for.
You guys have all seen the map, right? Can we get a motion?
How long do you think it's gonna have to close the street?
Well, probably wanna close them off either, I, I would almost say the night before, um, to get some of those tenants off, or else we can, you know, wait until the, the next morning, but, um, what we have a problem with is we're banging on people's doors at seven o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, telling them to move their cars, so.
In the past, we've done it the night before, every time?
Yeah.
Just to try to get as many cars on?
And not that, again, you know, like by the library and stuff, like if people, you know, like Henderson's apartments are there, obviously, if they wanna park on that side street, but again, they're, be prepared, they'll all have notice, we've always posted notice on their doors, um, to let them know that we're, we're closing the streets off, so.
The only, the only concern I have is, when, I was always told, you have to leave the closed office open for Saturday or-
Yep, and, and that's, I mean, the parade's gonna be coming down Main Street there, so it will have to be open, but after that, we will, we will make sure it's completely closed off, so.
And I'm sure the businesses are all for it, they're activities, right?
Yeah, and, and honestly, we haven't gone business to business to talk about this yet, because it is only March, um, but, but we definitely will talk to them. Um, you know, they, they kind of plan for it every year, they know that it's coming, so.
We may forget, I'm sure.
I hope.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice event, and what, what question I have, and this is for Jim, those picnic tables on the right away, if they had a chance to start, you know, they're gonna fix those up, paint them, and-
Oh, that, yeah.
'Cause they'll use those tables, right? We've got like twenty tables that are on the, and we got some replacement tables, but these are the ones that they would-
They're a little lighter, the ones I think you're talking about, they're not the great, the heavy ones.
The ones that are about the light ones.
Oh, those are the heavy ones?
But we're gonna try to get that done this winter.
I've talked to Mike, we've got some time before August, so.
Might have snow day here this month.
Well, and we, we also talked about, you know, depending on how much funds are raised, is, is bringing in some of those long tables that you see, you know, pulled behind-
I see Kevin Kenny has some of them.
Yeah, we've used those before for other events.
Have you used Kevin's?
Yeah.
Oh, those are nice. So, but you still would need these, I would think, you guys get a big crowd.
Yeah, I mean, we'll definitely take them, so.
But we should, I mean, that would be a reason for, motivate us to get them fixed up, I think.
Yeah.
All right, we get a motion?
Me, I have my question, you know, for liability for a fire when they closed the streets off, and then an issue for you guys.
Well, odds are, something happens, ten people tend to move the license iron.
They're closed, everybody will be closed, so.
Um, you know, obviously, if there was an emergency like that, 'cause, um, I don't, I'm trying to think of, I don't think we're blocked out in front of the-
They're not blocked off for those days.
No, no. Um, yeah, obviously, if, if there was an emergency, we would absolutely clear everything out as soon as quick, you know, we could, so.
I'll make a motion to, for the street closing, a little touch on this, first thing, for one.
Second.
Motion to the second, Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Rob? Val?
Aye.
Thank you. And Megan, you can stay there for the next one?
Sure, sure.
Okay. This is for June twelfth, and it's in the industrial tract, and it's also an event for Wakefield Progressive.
Yep. So, um, as we were talking about bands and things like that to come for, for Wake Fest, um, I got in contact with a country music star from Nashville, um, that has performed, and, you know, all over, all over the country, has some big hits, and he and I talked several times, he's willing to come up to Wakefield and play, and also bring his, his girlfriend, um, her name's Kylie Morgan, who also has some, some hits on, on the Top Forty charts, so. This is a, a great opportunity to, again, just create a little more tourism, economic development through, through the arts. We would like to, because this could potentially generate a huge crowd, um, we would like to have it out at the, on the grassy area of the Forty Acres. Originally, I might, if it was in baseball season, how cool would it be to have a stage down there, you know, people around it, but it, the timing isn't, isn't gonna work, so.
You could have it now, wouldn't you?
Well, not June twelfth.
You never know.
But, um, you know, I, we would, you know, we're, we would like to bring in food trucks, we wanna make it a, a more than just a, a concert, we wanted really to draw people in from all over the, the tri-state region, and, and just kind of, like I said, create a little economic activity through tourism and, and the arts.
How, how are you gonna get power?
Well, you have power, right there with the, um, with the utility hookups for the cameras, so there's already power there. So plus, I would assume, and, and again, I haven't, until I talk to you guys, I, I can't really go out and do much else to plan for this, so I'm, I'm going to make a assumption, 'cause they do these types of things all the time, a production team is going to bring, have some type of a generator, some for, for some of the equipment.
What, what are you thinking for parking? We're talking a thousand people.
Well, that's, I mean, that's why I can't, again, I can't be specific on where, like, the stage is gonna go or anything, because we will park people in, in the field. Um, though, you know, if, if this is a go, we'll probably park them at the civic center, at the school, shuttle people in, maybe even shuttle from Wayne, those people that are spending the night, um, you know, so that, yeah.
That's great, good idea. Uh, we were, I was at Nashville for about three hours one day, and we were going to Knoxville to watch Tree Stallion around the national, uh, NCAA track championships, and, uh, but we were at Fan Fest, which we didn't know what that was, it was just starting, they were just starting the Fan Fest? And we were both, there were about six people sitting around, a guy that was like right where Larry is. I mean, I thought he was a pretty good singer. Oh, Janelle said, nobody even knows who that is, we gotta get going, so we left, and it was John Michael Montgomery.
Yeah.
Janelle, Janelle's not watching, so don't tell her what I said.
Well, and, and again, our hopes is that the money raised from this can help even with, you know, maybe some of the expenses with Wake Fest, but then next year, we can get maybe a bigger artist, and, you know, then maybe two artists, and, I mean, just, just to keep it growing.
Yeah, I appreciate your enthusiasm, that's, that's a good project, are you guys have questions?
I have one here.
Yep, yep, we, I would assume, again, I think, I'm, I'm learning as, as we go on this, but I'm assuming we'll start moving stuff in on Thursday or Friday, um, as far as equipment. Um, but Jay has a show the night before in Kentucky, so he won't actually be here until Saturday morning, and right now, the plan is that he and his band are gonna stay with, with Ernie and I, so pre-concert afterwards.
We ever been that?
That, any questions?
Lester, you're a man, be.
I could.
Can we get a motion?
Make a motion, maybe put the request for the block music government industrial tract on, uh, I'd be before June twelfth, prior to June twelfth.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, one more thing, if we own the property, is the city insurance, is that final?
If we will have liability also, we will have, have our own insurance on, on the event.
If I go have a wonderful time and break my hip again?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be just like doing something uptown, just like Wake Fest, so we'll, we'll have our own, own insurance, so.
Side of motion.
Uh, Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Oh, they reported a little bit, thank you, Megan.
And I will keep you guys posted on how this is progressing and kind of fine tune the details so that you guys are aware of what's going on.
Yeah, it's gonna be great, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Housing study. Hannah Keenan?
Well, I got this just about the same time, well, probably later than you guys did.
Forty, forty-five.
Yeah. So. They got it done, which we're, we're thankful, we had a pretty good turnout on surveys, um, again, I, I apologize, 'cause I haven't had a chance to read through this either. Um, but it, you know, it looks like they're kind of reinforcing what we already thought our perception was. I think now, we were at fifty rental units that we needed, now we're up to, uh-
About three.
Well, it looked like for the area, we were up to a hundred, for the total area. So, but I, I mean, I couldn't, I could be-
So you haven't had much time looking at it, okay.
Yeah.
But it fulfills the obligation as far as grants and, you know, it's-
Yep.
Okay, us meeting the requirements for those things, so that's good.
Yep.
Hannah Keenan's real record also.
Absolutely, and, and I do look forward to reading through it, reading through the, the survey said, um, because they, they do do a good job, so.
All right, thank you, Megan.
You're welcome. Is this my copy, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, there's an update on the water treatment plant, uh, and there are a lot of things in there, we had a, I thought a really good meeting a week ago, and covered a lot of topics. But we also made a decision on the state revolving loan fund, was the select, that's what our funding, uh, mechanism is going to be, right, Jim?
Correct, yeah. And I've printed out for you, and there's a lot of information and detail in there, the loan agreement. We, we need to approve this by the April council meeting, so we can get all these documents, uh, completed, so attorney has copies, you guys have hard copies, we have, app questions come in, whatever, uh, there's a lot of legal jargon in-
Okay, so we're not gonna even talk about approving this tonight, we, we did-
No, it's for your review, but we will have to bring it before the council for approval in April.
And you guys did look at it last week pretty thoroughly, he made, your initial decision was made, so, is that it, Jim?
Yeah, that is it.
All right.
Unless you have other questions.
Mayor's public private period, anyone have anything to, this is up? All right, and, uh, utility formal report? And they are working on, I saw the third street, plenty of streets, and they were going through alleys and leveling, and, while we have a break in the weather, so. All right, Jim?
Okay, just a handful of mic deals, uh, item here as well, sales tax, seen the, the sales tax for February, which was way above average, twenty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and, one, one ninety-three, so. Stepping up our monthly average there, but almost, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars, and putting some good money in the bank.
So Jim, Kyle alluded to the fact that you and Zach have talked about it, you don't know that we necessarily need to have a, a, a vote on that, changing the UC door, um, is that right? If we can do the franchise fee for the electric, is that what you-
Yeah, he's talked to us before about that, and that, and that was one of the, his high priorities, to get that franchise fee in there, and, um, get that set up and established, and after that, um-
So it sounds like we need to do that by October, before, but, I, I mean, right?
Yeah, I'm sure there's more to come on, and he just said-
Yeah, I think it'd be good to, to have a conference call, uh, specifically with him, maybe in the next couple of days, and get, uh, his exact ideas on, um, what he's asking for that.
So maybe you can say about that in the morning? All right.
So, okay, so how's that work, everybody in town, when they pay theirs, their city bill?
Haven't done it before, so I don't know, but, uh, townhome meeting.
What?
Wouldn't it, like, would that just be another fee attached for our city bill?
No, 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 no. We're imposing a franchise fee on our electric sales.
They're not raising rates, they're just taking a franchise fee on what we already take in, and that allows them to move it and follow the law.
So we make three point eight-ish million a year on electric, and the general fund will be charging the ten percent on that to three hundred and so a thousand, just as a workaround for the transfers, not any extra on the customers.
So, I mean, that makes sense to do that.
Okay, so it's just delegating what we're already taking in, in a different way?
Yes.
Okay.
Formally, yes, yes, that's what, that's what he wants to see as a-
No, we don't wanna miss the date.
Yeah.
Rather than, than just a straight transfer electric to here, it's a franchise fee imposed to that. We, yeah, that was, that's a good thing to do. And I sent out a legislative bulletin here for the first part of March, uh- Uh, again, they're working on, um, L B eighty-three, Open Meetings Act, to get some, uh, things and some, uh, priorities there. Uh, a bill of concern is L B four oh eight, and I think, uh, mayor made a comment about that before, about property tax and growth, uh, limited to three percent. Um, so, uh, those are some concerns, that, um, the league is, uh, opposing that legislation as well. So that's something else to, uh, to be discussing.
And I, I don't want to tell anybody how they should feel about property taxes, but I, I've never minded paying my property taxes because, because I can see the things that it's fun, I mean, I can see the things that are getting done locally. And, you know, the big property tax points came when farm values rose. And I never bought any acres of ground around here, but the people that bought it are the ones that are most upset about paying the property taxes. And when the sale, the value of the acre of ground increases because they pay that much money for the ground, then the ground is probably worth it above money. But it does increase their property taxes significantly. But when you start, if you make a reduction in that property tax, you're gonna cut services, or you're going to have to find other sources of taxation.
Yep.
Period. And they're trying to put a lid already on the schools and the cities. And there's, that takes away all your flexibility, uh, if you want to get something done. I think it's a, it's gonna be a great for someone who knows a lot of property, but it's gonna be harmful to schools, and I think it's gonna be harmful to communities providing any amenities that people would like to have. I was a little upset that the Gaven Parks with their new five-year goals has taken the, the stance that they want to put their money into pro, this money comes from mineral rights. The Gaven Parks simply administers the funds for our state. Each state gets a proportion based on population. But they want to put their money into areas where there's high use, in other words, in large metropolitan areas. Most of the grants this year went to those areas. In Lincoln, you've got Waverly, which is basically a suburb of Lincoln right now. And you've got Malcolm, where our kids, our grandparents go to school, some of them. And that's a suburb on the west Lincoln, that's basically what it is. They each got about four or five hundred thousand dollars, and then the city of Lincoln got a large amount added to the city of Omaha. The only ones around here that got anything, and there weren't any in the immediate area except for West Point for a trail, and then also there were some splash beds, which were pretty small grants. But I think that we have to fight, because a lot of, a lot of the people that are not populated in Omaha and Lincoln grew up in Wakefield or Emerson or Wayne, and, you know, a lot of those people are pretty, uh, are pretty good citizens in those communities, and they grew up in these small towns. I don't think we want to let small towns wither and die, or be a place where you're kind of embarrassed to be from. And I think this would be very detrimental. And farm grow is one of the biggest, uh, pushers of this, and agriculture. And a lot of agricultural land is owned by people that don't even reside in the state of Nebraska. Uh, it's, it's just a fact. But I think it's a bad move, but it's got huge support among, I don't think there's any question, but that it's gonna pass in some form. And it's gonna be detrimental to small towns. And nobody said anything about the Gaven Parks new plan, that they're gonna put it in large population centers to do the most good for the most people. And they've got all kinds of options in Omaha for grants and funds, and we're pretty limited. Anyway, nothing else on that, go ahead Jim.
Well, tho, those are some good comments, Paul. Uh, one of the big issues we have is, is, uh, the number of senators represented by those, by those bigger cities, and the lobbyists. There's lobbyists down there, you know, wanting to, uh, encourage your senator to do the things they want him to do. Uh, so, yeah, get a hold of your senator, let him know that, hey, this isn't good for small-town Nebraska. And, um, don't be afraid to, to reach out and, and talk to them. Email, quick email, who you are, what the problem is. Uh, I, I correspond with Senator Bracken, um, almost every week. And he gets back to me, and he lets me know that, uh, he, he understands the situation. Uh, see there, Big Rivers update, we did attend a joint meeting, um, Monday afternoon with, uh, Northeast Wayne and ourselves, so, uh, a couple of things came out of that. We, we don't have a lot to go off yet, but, um, if you remember from the PowerPoint presentation, there's a recommendation to change the delivery point. Um, all three entities are in favor of doing that, and at some point in time, uh, file some type of, uh, dispute. Uh, we learned a little bit about that, we need to look at our contract, and, uh, see what, how you do the dispute and when you do it, you know. Of course, we've got to be invoiced at some point in time, we expect to see that, uh, invoice, and then we can, um, file, uh, a very straightforward dispute, and, um, that's, again, what all three entities are going to do. Uh, I got, uh, a newsletter from, um, the Power Pool in Lincoln just today, and it said that the FERC, that's a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and the NERC, which is a North America Electric Reliability Cooperation, announced they will open a joint inquiry of the operation of both power and, uh, issues during the extreme winter conditions experienced, and allergies and other issues. So, um, we have to wait and see a little bit what's going on there. Another, um, item that, uh, I had talked to our rate consultant. If, when and if we have to, uh, pay the bill, the issue will be how we're gonna recoup some money. So, uh, I hand it out, just for your review, is a copy of, um, a rate adjustment. Again, it's, the adjustment would only be there pending, uh, these invoices, uh, continue to be high, and we have to fight doing something about it.
Exactly to the point Jim, if you spread that over to the customers in our electric system, it'd be about a thousand dollars per customer, per household, which is a large amount of money. Jim does have a newspaper article, he enclose, the Scribberner, city council put in a hundred thousand dollars to try to alleviate some of the pain for their customers, but that, you talk about a jump in rates, and a lot of people that are on social security or whatever, I don't know how they can handle that, it's tough.
Well, it, it's yet to be determined...
Hopefully.
What some of those costs will be, uh, in that rate, uh, structure there is what they call production credit adjustment. I had them just propose to go out and look at a one-year and a two-year. And I sent my utility bill to them, and I said, "What does that mean? If, if we impose this to, uh, make these increases?" And it was about an eight-dollar increase per month, or one year and about four dollars and fifty cents for two-year recovery. And again, that's residential, um, and there'd be a lot of issues to, to work out, but let's, uh, continue to hope some intervention happens here in the meantime.
So right now it's still at seven hundred and ninety thousand?
It is. And I, I will give you one little bit of information. We went into a executive session, uh, in this meeting in, in Wayne, and, uh, their bill is staggering. Staggering, okay? And they're not the only ones, there's, there's so many entities out there that are just being inundated, that, uh, it's just overwhelming, so. We'll like to see how things progress there, and, uh, continue to, uh, just monitor that there. I'm gonna hand around these pictures, uh, we did a final inspection walkthrough with our levy, uh, and this is, uh, about a dozen good pictures of the work and the progress being done there. Corps of Engineers is, uh, basically writing this thing off, saying, hey, we're ninety-nine point nine percent complete, and, uh, we're going to, they have, they created a punchway, and little housekeeping items they had to do today, have some cleanup, they are seeding and, um, bedding all the area that was disturbed. It's a very big area, I think we'll be really happy, probably find when we get done with that, then we get some grass and some bro, growing in those areas.
That's a relief, yep.
And they said, uh, I think I mentioned this to you before, in prior council meetings, is the, uh, the audit. They have to go back and, uh, go through all the pay requests, all the, uh, charges and stuff, and it's probably about a three to four month wait before we finally know what, uh, maybe we could even get some money back out of this deal, so. I, I asked them if they would kindly get it to us by August, so we don't have to carry this into another budget and get it all cleaned up there, so.
Did you, did you see in the Wakeville paper that they had a years gone by, and they talked about the flood of nineteen seventy-one? And when the river flooded in nineteen, within nineteen oh seven, then another bad flood in nineteen forty-four, and then nineteen seventy-one?
Seventy-one, yeah.
It was interesting, it talked about where the water was at. Kind of good review.
So you have a question for you, what are they gonna do with that leftover dirt pile back there?
What are we gonna do with it?
That's a lead?
Yeah, there's a lot of dead rock and drift route and other material in there, so, got some... I probably want to go talk to a couple farmers, including Mr. Slama and, and maybe, um, uh, John out here, and see if they have some need for some fill. It's, it's pretty rough stuff, it's got a lot of rock and, and mixture in there, so we could let them use it backfill, clean up, you know, fill up some holes in their pasture or whatever, but...
Is that on our property?
No.
Which property is that?
Mike Loos. So we'll have to, get some of that cleaned up.
Any questions for Jim? Nope, thanks Jim. All right, we got sixteen A, B, and C, seventeen, the CRA, Sam's here tonight.
Thank you, I'll just do a quick review, a little bit of an update. One of the things that I was asked, um, recently, we were asked if we could, uh, make regular reports at this forum, and create better communication, better transparency, and we're all about doing that. In fact, we, we had in our, in our last meeting, we had sort of, uh, does everybody agree to that? Oh, yes we do, yep, we're all gonna work on that. And so, that's a, that's a main point, that, um, I hope that we'll see and experience from CRA going forward. We're a, we're a little bit of a new committee, um, a new chairman, a new vice chairman. Um, we don't have a lot of experience, but I think our cornerstones are people that can help us and will rely on, in Jim, and Megan, and Teresa, and those, and forgive me if I'm forgetting someone.
Gerald said he would help as an advisor.
Who?
Gerald Moore said he would help as an advisor.
Okay, that would be a good one, that would be a good one. Um, and so, we're, we're gonna move forward, uh, you know, the best we can, and I think we have resources available to us to, to move forward. Help me out here Jim, Megan, if there's some recent projects that I'm missing. But just a quick update, Estetman Property is ready for excavation and ready the lot. Some trees have come down, uh, we needed to frost out of the ground before that to be practical. The same thing for the old Velco Station down at the end of, uh, Main Street, and those are set to happen. Um, we have the, the house that we purchased on, the coral colored house, I call it, and I don't know the street name, I'm sorry, but the idea of that property was that it was adjacent to already existing city property, and, and going forward, and there was no plan to use it going forward, other than to connect it with it, to create opportunity for some kind of business, businesses, housing, drive-through, something, don't know. But, so that's why we hold that property, and we own it, and we rent it, and, uh, we have that responsibility there. Of course, Megan is working on the downtown redevelopment, uh, project, that's an ongoing thing, and hopefully, um, that'll be, that'll be moving forward as we go along. We are interested in, um, vacant houses and more blighted areas. And we're excited to hear that there's consideration to increase the blighted area, some. Well, so give us more opportunities like this house you talked about, perhaps that would have been included in the new area, I don't know. But things like that, that we're interested in, to expand our opportunities and, um, you know, improve things in the community. But we talk about, we spend some time talking about different programs that we can develop. One, I'll just use one as an example, and that's a house painting program. If we can figure out how to equitably go around and help people paint their homes that are in need of it. And, you know, and when you get into those kinds of things, they're not clear, they're not easy. Um, I've learned with, working with the CRA, that, uh, a lot of these projects and things we look at are individual, and we have to look at them individually on their basis, on their contribution, tax-wise, uh, on the economic contribution. And so, we just, I just feel, we want to try to be open to different things, and, um, and figure some things out, and keep, keep moving forward. Uh, on which, one impression I had, I've been out of pocket for a few months, but one of the things that struck me in our last meeting was how much money we have, which means we may be handling done very much. And we have opportunity to do more, and so, that, these, you know, ideas from this body to help us do those things and make things happen, and, and work on workforce housing and economic development and whatever. We're all within our guidelines and our mission, and one of the things that we'll try to do is, um, when we get off in the weeds and we're not sure where we should be, or what's happening, or we're talking about something that's taking up a lot of time, um, let's go back to our mission. What's our mission here, and are we working within our mission? So, anyway, that's all I have, I can find, I'm smart enough to answer any questions, I'll try, but...
What, what did they say, Sam, that Janelle and I were driving, uh, we went down to the park and walked, and we came back, and we went past the workforce housing, the first one that, uh, was done, and Megan alluded to it, or I think something did tonight. But man, that, that just turned that, that corner around, and the, across the street now, they fixed up their home. And if, I think if we could just, those kinds of things are really important in Wakefield.
Yeah.
And Mike, Mike Loos said, when he was the mayor, he always talked about having a paint-a-thought, and we never got it done, but I think you're on to something there, maybe we could get some properties that are tough shape. Oh, appreciate your work, thanks Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys got questions for Sam?
Thanks.
All right. Park Board, and we met today just for, didn't really meet as a board, we just had an informational meeting with the, the council members that are part of the, uh, that oversee the parks, and that's Scott Hanson and Ross Hanson, and they, uh, working on trying to get the pool, uh, ready to open, which is kind of exciting after last year's deal where we didn't have a chance to have the kids swim. Uh, library board is up next, am I missing any? Library board, does anyone want to speak about that, or is, uh, um, they've got their minutes? Civic Center Board, anyone to talk with Civic Center? And they just met today, I believe, right?
No, they met last week.
Oh, they did? Okay. Fire Department, Adam's here.
Just a little bit of updates here, we're looking, uh, fire school's coming up in May. As of right now, there's approximately fourteen of them, they're showing interest in going down to that. I don't know if we'll be able to send all fourteen down, but it is a large cost for hotel rooms and registration. We may be working on sometime about one day or two day training to take place on a weekend to try to get our new people, at least, a little bit more up to speed. Also with that, either this summer or... Also with that, either this summer or in the fall, we are planning on hosting a firefighter one class that will be taking place in Wakefield. With the majority of these students taking part in that will be from the Wakefield department. So that'll give us, we're looking at somewhere around, somewhere between eight and ten more certified firefighters in, for the city of Wakefield. So if there are houses coming up that you can, that are going to be purchased by, we will be needing at least one or two of them, if at all possible, for them to burn for their practice. Basically, the only update I have at this time.
You've got fourteen people that want to go to Fire School, is that?
Yes. That's what this is going to look like. But that's also going to close to half the department right now. So taking half the department away is probably not the greatest idea.
Oh. Thank you.
From rescue calls last year, in February, we had eight calls. One called care center, three from home, three from business industry, and one, no transport. Of those eight calls, six went to Wayne, one went to Sioux City, and one, no transport. Twenty-nine hours spent on calls. We had five day calls, that's six AM to six PM, that's the day hours. And then we had the two night calls.
Thanks, Larry. Cemetery Board. This is a pamphlet that we, I gave to Gary Don and Solomon. And there was one for each member of the Cemetery Board, and we, we had extra ones made. But we're trying to do this with each committee, each committee that we have. And the next one, the next one is the Library. But it lists our membership on the Cemetery Board, when their term expires. And thanks him for serving in the Cemetery Board. It talks about the cemetery being back there in a hundred and forty years. First burial took place in eighteen eighty-four. It's got the constitution and bylaws ratified in eighteen ninety-nine. And the first round of cemetery was given to the community by Philo Graves. And thereafter, the cemetery bought five more acres from Philo Graves. They've got reserve fund of forty-three thousand dollars and a professional care fund of eighty-three thousand dollars. It mentions the cemetery, the story in the Wakefield paper, and the Wayne Harold about the Cemetery Board's history. It shows the graves, the Philo Graves and his kids. He had, they lost three children to childhood disease. There were four, five, and seven, three children. And they were buried in Sioux City because Wakeville didn't have a cemetery at the time. And I believe that's what motivated them to give land for a cemetery. We visited that grave site again yesterday. It was a nice day, and Janelle and I were in Sioux City, so we stopped out there. And then it's got where they brought Philo Graves back. He died with no money. He was too generous, and he laid in a mausoleum in California for a year and a half. And then they brought him back, his body back from burial. He was a member of the Odd Fellows in Sioux City, they did the service. But it's got a lot of information. Wakefield people attended, and there was a group in Wakefield that raised money for the gravestone there and had a ceremony later on. And then it's got the total, the, the ordinance, the written ordinance of the Cemetery Board, what, what they're supposed to be doing, and, and that's the law. And then it's got a map of the grave sites. And then it's got what I think would help us and help the committees. It's got your committee goals for, and I think this should be probably, I was going to ask the council, but probably two-year period instead of one, but your committee goals for twenty twenty-one. And the number one goal for every committee is to make a great community better. And then the last thing is that we need to, to work with the council on this is you may be asked to be involved with the following twenty twenty-one goals selected by the Wakefield City Council members and mayors. We may need your help in implementing these goals. And this is the first one, but we're going to try and get, I'm going to try to get these made for every committee, but it takes me a long time to do these things, so. That's the Cemetery Board. Patrick, is that?
Almost done.
Rehab Board? Tree Board, Megan? Nope. Uh, that's it? Plains? You looked them over, Val, right? And it looks good to you?
Yeah, it's pretty good. I don't think you stated anything yet.
Don't say anything yet.
And I'll be up tomorrow, all right? Is there a motion to pay the claims?
I move to pay the claims.
Got a motion to second, and I think it's Scott's turn, I'm not sure if that, Larry? Ross?
Aye.
And I'm not going to miss this one because I did last meeting. I got up and left, and we hadn't adjourned yet. And we put in motion for adjournment.
Do we just went before we adjourned?
Before we adjourned.
Yeah. Do we need to have a special meeting to discuss employee status?
Um, Ross, what do you think?
I, yeah, I mean, I'm quite glad you guys are.
Do I have a special meeting, or do you want to have an executive session tonight?
We could have an executive session tonight.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So I made a motion that we set a date to have a special meeting for employees status.
And.
I think it would be a very, I think it would be a fairly short meeting, I think.
And if we have one, we can also address the, the house purchase, well, depending on if, if that committee gets together before the next planning.
Does that have a date? Maybe we could do it on the next.
Next Monday?
Huh?
Next Monday?
Monday work?
Just saying that.
Okay, that works for everybody?
Okay, Scott may, I coach, so it's going to have to be after Saturday.
I'm sure, what time do you need Scott or Ross?
I don't know. Okay, just to be, be Ross.
Tuesday?
I don't know when it's for the game.
Seven would be a great time for me, because I go to Allen and back to Emerson, back to Wakefield.
Seven PM on what day? Thanks, you guys. Seven PM Thursday, or Tuesday? That says Tuesday?
That would be sixteen.
Sixteen, that works for everybody?
It's not really a motion, is it, Lee? We're just setting a meeting, right?
Yeah. Okay, all we need to do that is adjourn the meeting. Second? All in favor? The Senate can go in the executive session anytime, if they remember a reason. But the office says, you know, it doesn't have to be one of them.
Jim, if it's about Jim, for example, he can say I don't want to be in the executive session.
It can be an open session, I'm sure.
You can't go.
I thought we needed to do this for years, for years. I don't know what way, why we need to go in the executive session.
Can I get you to sign a couple things for the re-?